This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call the Village Board for Tuesday, March 22nd to order roll call, please.
President Kardowski.
Here.
Trustee Paul.
Here.
Trustee Kubaki.
Here.
Trustee Zerbal is excused. Trustee Krieger.
Here.
Trustee Fluki.
Here.
And trustee Service.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember our men and women throughout the world in uniform. I have no changes to the agenda. I need a motion to approve, please.
Move to.
Phil Kuru is presenting.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Action on the open and closed minutes from February 22, 2022.
Vote to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number six, comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. Must state your name and address. You're limited to five minutes. The board's role is to listen and not discuss the item. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named, and the board is not able to take action at this meeting. Is there anybody who would like to speak on items not on the agenda? The gentleman in, right behind you, Stan, you can be, he raised his hand first, so you can be second. Could you come up to the microphone, please, and state your name and address for the record?
My name is Dan Zepnick, 2408 Shady Lane.
Could you, could you speak into the mic, please? Thank you.
My name is Dan Zepnick, 2408 Shady Lane.
Okay.
I'm here to try to get some results on the floodplain issue that we're having in my neighborhood. Two years ago, May 26, 2020, we had a rain event, and our property got severely flooded. I spent $15,000 redoing the under, lower level of my, our house. So, March 5th, and, and I'm going to state that the reason for that flood was the trees that the village cut down, they left them lay in the wa, in the floodplain and in the waterway, and it plugged up the culvert, which backed the water way up from previous flooding that we ever had when there was no restrictions. So, on March 5th, we had another rain event, and there were trees that were falling over in the creek that I called and talked to the forester last fall. Excuse me, and, uh, none of them were taken out. The ice came and dammed up against them trees, backed the water up again, and luckily, we were home. We got all of the articles out underneath in the lower level. I had, uh, neighbors and family, an army of people. We ended up only getting like one inch of water in the house, but it was enough to take out the carpet, and I have to do a lot of repairs again. So, I was told two years ago that they changed the culverts to upstream, either Packerland or West Point. They enlarged them. I believe that makes more of a water volume in my neighborhood or my block. And I think the culverts need to be bigger. Back when the road was made, 60 years ago, it's got a four-foot carvo, four-foot culvert in, under Shady, Balsam, and, uh, Kimberly. I think those culverts need to be opened up so that the water can flow. Even if the trees are, are out of there, I think the water still needs to flow. The creek is about eight feet wide in that, under Shady. Back 60 years ago, maybe that creek was three foot wide. I think the, the banks have been washed out, the trees are falling in. There needs to be something done, either a backhoe, come in, clean that out. State Statute 8890 states that whoever owns that waterway is responsible for the water flow. I believe that's the village of Ashwabanen. I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
I'm familiar with your property, and Steve Byrne, I walked it, um, up that creek, so thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, Stan, would you like to state your name and address for the record, please?
Stanley Hansen, 631 West Briar Lane. Formerly of Carstensen Apartments on New Year's Eve with the fire. I was one of those, so everything got delayed a couple months, but I'm back in action now. I was a former crossing guard at, for Ashwabanen for several years, and last year I was fired, which I will explain the reason for that. And I am now a crossing guard in DePere. I'll start out explaining what happened. On May 18th of last year, as I was crossing in the afternoon, I, uh, at very heavy traffic, I had students lined up on the sidewalk to cross. I put my, there's no gap, you have to stop traffic at that time. So I had traffic stopped on both sides of the road. I went out into the crosswalk, over the center line to the other side, because I knew this car was dead stopped and it was only five feet away, and just the way I did it. And I, cars on both sides were stopped. I was just about ready to wave to students across the road. I happened to notice on the westbound lane coming down the hill from Quick Trip, a speeding car came down, passed the car that was stopped going west in the bicycle lane, and came back right toward me. And I did manage to jump out of the way just barely, and, uh, the car went speeding by. There happened to be a police officer in that parking lot. Used to be a choir practice office, uh, right on, uh, Morris Avenue, right by Trulane. And the police officer took out after that car and stopped him. Him or, I'm not sure. Anyhow, I thought that driver's in trouble, because he was definitely speeding down Carmier, and I was more than in the center of crosswalk. Who knows where my hand was, but it doesn't matter, because I was a pedestrian. Several weeks later, I was just curious what happened to that driver, and I did check with the, with the police, uh, office here, and the girls were most helpful. The only people I found in this, pretty much in this office that would help me were the girls. Once you get past them, everything happens. Anyhow, I read the, uh, officer's report, and the two violations, speeding and cross, uh, school crossing violation. Two very major penalties. I came very close to being killed. If I would have been hit by that car, I wouldn't be here, so there's no doubt about that. At the bottom, the officer gave that driver a verbal warning. And when I saw that, needless to say, I was very pissed. There's a lot of things happened between me and a couple of the higher-ranked police officers in Ashwabanen. And I reacted quite, I think, I, I think I was within reason with what happened. I posted signs on both sides of my crosswalk. Danger, grumpy old marine crossing guard. You know about that, I talked to you about that. And, uh, officer, the def, the, one of the high-ranking policemen came up with our crossing guard supervisor and warned me to take my signs down. Him and I had a very meaningful conversation about the police action in school zones in Ashwabanen. It's very easy to check, just go there and check and see how many, how many. The reason I, I was pissed, I knew that driver was going to get a, a serious ticket. I, I went to the office, I checked, I said, I want to know how many violations were given in school zones in May. The report came back, no, zero. I said, that can't be. That, that guy definitely got a violation. That's when I, then another girl there checked and called me back, and it seems that a verbal warning is not a violation, so that was not it. And when I gave her the date and the time approximate, then she looked at it, and then she found me the report about the verbal warning, which is not a, not a violation. I, not knowing where I stand, the whole thing was officer's discretion. Now, we all know about officer's discretion. You know, it goes from, what, spitting on the sidewalk to somewhere in between. Because of all the way to the top.
Stan, I don't mean to stop you, but you're going over the five minutes. I do have to tell you that.
I think, I'll, just give me a couple more minutes. This is, this is something that's going to the Police and Fire Commission. I realize the board can do nothing. This is just information for you, because there's, there's probably information coming from the police department and others. I'm sure this is pretty well-known around the building. Is that correct, Mary?
I don't know that any of the trustees know anything about it.
Mary, if I want to just interject, so if this is going to, uh, go before the Police and Fire Commission, it's clearly a personnel matter. It's an item that, that should not be discussed at the board meeting. It should be referred to the Police and Fire Commission to have appropriate response from them. The board doesn't really play a role in disciplinary matters as relates to personnel in the police, uh, public safety department, so.
This, I'm aware of. I brought this up as information, because like I said, I'm sure this information is going to get all around about the, uh, goofy old crossing guard. I do have a pamphlet for each of you. It includes, uh, the three copies of the village, uh, first three pages of the village ordinance. It includes my complaint against a high-ranking police officer, and it includes the letter, the three-page letter that high-ranking police officer sent me to call me in to be fired.
Okay. You can hand, if you'd like to, you can hand them to either the village manager, and he can hand them out, or, um, but we can't, we can't discuss it, Stan.
The whole thing is going to officer's, give me a minute, Mary. You know what's.
The time has expired here. Our village manager explained it. If there's another issue here, it got to go to the police, uh, here in police. So, the time is done. If you've got information, give it to our person over in the corner there, and that'll be the end of this.
Okay, that's what I figured would happen. Thank you very much. I'm going to the Police and Fire Commission. This isn't going to stop here.
We can't do nothing about it here.
I know you can't. I'm just going to give you information. I, I didn't expect anything. I knew this would, was going to happen. Okay, who's going to give?
Thank you.
Do I?
I can take it.
Okay.
Mary's got the information, okay, so she does eight, one, two, three. And eight, one, two, C, four. I believe I got eight there. You can give another one to Mary. All the information's in there.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stan.
Also, I want to say one, can I say one thing? It involves a high-elected official in Ashwabanen, a couple of police officers, and myself. The high-elected official has done nothing wrong on this, except maybe her judgment was impaired on one matter, but that's normal for a politician, right? But, uh, just so, just so, you know. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stan. Okay, is there anybody else who would like to speak on any issues not on tonight's agenda? Anybody else who'd like to speak on anything not on tonight's agenda? Moving on. Number seven.
I'll be out and back in the lobby if anybody asked me, wants to get more information on it. Thank you for the time.
Okay, number seven, written communications or announcements. I have one. I would just like to say that, you know, we are celebrating our 150th anniversary. It is a sesquicentennial, um, this year, and, uh, we had the art students at the high school, were designing the logo. And the logo that we went with for the 150th was designed by Nelson Beams at our high school, and I think he did a wonderful job. It's on the front of the, um, spring catalog that went out, the, so. Just if you see Nelson, if you know him, just tell him thank you. He did an awesome job, so. Anybody else? Written communications.
I just have one announcement real quick. I just, hopefully, everybody got their brochure in the mail. Um, I'd recommend you, and the logo that he designed is right on the front here. Take a look at it. There's some really great programs in here from seniors to tots, so, uh, look for this. And Rex, I want to congratulate your department. It's a nice brochure, and you guys have a lot going on for everybody this summer, so thank you.
Okay, now, number eight. This is a fun thing. Uh, we have an appointment of our new legal counsel, Mr. Patrick Legal, to village attorney. So I would need a motion to appoint him.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to appoint Patrick Legal as our village attorney. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried.
Welcome aboard.
Yes.
Happy to be here. Thank you.
Okay, now, this is another fun time here. We have a promotion of our, um, public safety lieutenants. So, chief, it's all.
All right, let's move on to something more exciting, shall we? I would like to, first of all, introduce our new lieutenants, and I'm going to speak a little bit about them. Uh, talk a little bit about the process first. Uh, we had two new lieutenant positions that were open during our process. Uh, not only did they have to apply with a letter of interest and resume, they had to answer essay questions. Um, they had to do practical exercises, they had to do oral interviews with command staff and the Police and Fire Commission. We did backgrounds, looked at their history, and selected two new ten, lieutenant, two new lieutenants for us. So, with that, uh, the first lieutenant that I would like to welcome up is Kyle Kubaki. Kyle, come on up. Right here, sir. Uh, prior to, uh, becoming a public safety officer, Kyle was an officer with Seymour and Bondwell PD. Uh, he's worked for Public Safety as a dispatcher, a paid-on call firefighter. Uh, he was a member and associate advisor with Ashwabanen Explorer Post, now the cadets. Uh, he's been with, uh, Public Safety for 10 years, and a field training officer since 2017, and is also a fire instructor. So with that, welcome, Kyle. Congratulations. We'll have, uh, Caitlin, come on up and do the badge pinning.
Nobody's watching, Kate. It only bleeds a little while.
There you go. Congratulations. All right, Ben, you're next, in the spotlight. Ben is, uh, affectionately known as the best mustache in the department, by the way. So, Ben, uh, graduated from Lake Superior State University with a bachelor's degree. I had to look that, where is that? It, it's basically Canada, right? Basically Canada, so. So he graduated a bachelor's degree in fire science and associate degree of, uh, as in paramedic technology. He's been a public safety officer for 15 years, is also a paramedic. Um, he is a field training officer since 2020. He's a member of the Honor Guard, an advisor for the cadet program, a firearms instructor, and a police instructor, so, uh, with that, Ben, congratulations. Welcome. Hannah, where are you at? There she is. Well, she's in the corner over there.
It only hurts for a little while, Ben.
You got it.
Oh, right.
Congratulations. So I didn't want to embarrass them too much while they were up here, but, uh, the lieutenant position, a- as I've always said, is one of the most important positions in our agency. Uh, not only do they have to listen to the officers and support them, but they also get it from command staff as well and try to navigate that. That position really makes us go, so I'm excited to see what Ben and Kyle, uh, can do for us and, and the leadership that they're going to provide. So, again, welcome and congratulations.
Congratulations, guys. Okay. Number 10, action on consent agenda. 10A, operators licenses. 10B, investment report. 10C, budgeted expenditures. 10D, un-audited 2021 general fund financials, and 10E, department reports. Is there anybody who would like any of that pulled, or I need a motion to accept?
Vote to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number 11, public hearings. 11A, public hearing regarding requested rezoning of parcel VA-99-5, 2305 San Louis Place from B3 community business to R3 multifamily residence. Aaron.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, the requested rezoning is for the former San Louis property, uh, the Bay at Maple Ridge, uh, as you can see up on the map. Uh, the request is to rezone it from its current B3 community business, uh, district to R3 multifamily for purposes of, uh, redeveloping, uh, the existing building into, uh, market-rate apartments. Uh, as this is a public hearing, uh, we'll take, uh, comment at this time, uh, without any discussion. Discussion will occur at the, uh, uh, action item.
Okay. Is there anybody here who would like to speak for or against this project, this rezone? I'm sorry. Okay, could you come up here and please state your name and address for the record? As Aaron said, the board cannot respond at all, but we can at the action portion.
Village Board trustees, uh, good evening. My name is John Vanderbeer. I'm the Director of Business Development for Champion Care. Uh, Champion Care owns and operates 13 long-term care facilities in the state of Wisconsin, and employs, uh, about 1,000 people, and cares for hundreds of frail older adults every day. My reason for speaking with you tonight, um, is to support the zoning change request at 2305 San Louis Place from B3 to R3. As many of you know, in 2018, because of significant Medicaid reimbursement losses and occupancy challenges, Champion Care made the difficult decision to close the Bay at Maple Ridge Health and Rehabilitation Center. After three years of marketing this property, we found buyers who want to repurpose the property to develop a 76-unit multifamily dwelling. This proposed redevelopment comes at a time when a recent study showed that 7,400 new apartments are needed in the Green Bay area. There are numerous legitimate reasons for this transition. Economic and workforce develop, development, repurposing a vacant building, the housing shortage, and involvement of credible developers. But beyond the strong reasons in favor of this change, we have concerns about the basic issue of fairness with expecting the current owners of a property to maintain this building as a long-term care facility when dozens of facilities across the state of Wisconsin have closed. When Maple Ridge closed its doors, Wisconsin nursing homes had the worst Medicaid reimbursement losses in the country and significant workforce shortages. These factors have become even more challenging since COVID-19. With a multifamily housing development just a stone's throw away, and considering this building has served as the home of its residents for decades, we would argue that a multifamily zoning, uh, use is consistent with its past use. Imagine if you had an, uh, a building that had a sign company, or a salon, or a liquor store, where the local government said that you could only use that building for its originally intended purpose. That would limit an owner's ability to find a buyer and force a company to continue to pay significant carry, carrying costs, including property taxes. On behalf of Champion Care, I humbly ask for the further consideration of this request for the zoning change by referring this issue back to the planning commission so that we can work together to find new life for this property. And I didn't realize that I didn't say my name and, uh, my address at the, at the top, so, uh, John Vandermeer, 5606 South Hill Drive in Madison, Wisconsin.
Thank you.
Anyway, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak for or against this property? Come on up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi. Kevin Gracioli, 1172 Atrium Court, DePere, Wisconsin. Um, I'm with Rush Gracioli Properties, uh, the intended buyer and developer of this property. At the planning commission, there, there were a number of, um, different concerns that were brought up with respect to this zoning change, and, um, I, I passed along to Aaron, so you very well may have seen some of this information, but, um, I just wanted to reaffirm with this building, the, the most efficient way to do it is to build around the things that can't be moved. The exterior walls, there's walls dividing the units. Um, with its current footprint, what's the best thing to do with it? Um, and, and I think you need to build around those, like, for example, with residential, you have to have a window in each living room. You have to have a window in each bedroom for, you know, escape in case something happens. Well, it's, it's very expensive, with, just the way those windows are built, it's very expensive to remove them, to transport, uh, to, to move that around. It's a lot easier to just build the plan around that. So, we've gone in with Jim LaPla, our architect. Um, we've gone in and we've designed a plan to make what's, um, most effective construction cost to get to an end product, to get to reasonable, desirable residential units. I think one thing that's kind of nice is with this location, just because of its access to the mall, Target, all the business, all the restaurants, everything that's there, I think that people, myself included, it's just, it's desirable. People would want to live with access to all those areas. Some people, some people may want to live. And, you know, one thing that I actually found interesting that's relevant to the conversation here, so I, I, I took data from apartments.com, and I looked at every single apartment unit that's available in all of Green Bay. It takes more time to do that, by the way, than one might think, but, um, regardless, so with all this information, here's what I found, because you, you have apartments, like the elements that are coming up, and Title Town flats, and you, you have some of these beautiful-looking buildings that are coming in, rents that are, um, significantly above what the traditional apartments are at. Um, and, and the, the reason I'm, I'm sharing this is I want to give credibility to, to the plan that we have. So, here's what I found, is it's, um, the size of the unit is less relevant. The thing that, the common denominator, denominator in each of these nicer apartments is the amenities and the common space. So the amenities, uh, in-unit washer, dryer, that was one. Um, having dishwashers, um, having common space, and not just like hallways or seating, but valuable common space, like rec rooms, uh, exercise rooms, things like that. Libraries, and, and those are things that we're going to be putting in here. So, um, these units are going to be smaller, just because of the footprint of the building. We have to build around it. So the, the, the units are going to be smaller than what other apartment sizes are. Um, but we're also pricing that in. We're, we're going to have basically brand-new units, um, that are going to be more affordable than the new construction product that's going to be presented to the market. Sorry. Sorry. Okay. So that's, I think that there's a niche in the market for new, desirable, prime real estate that costs less than the competition. So affordable, new market rate. That's what we're going for. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this project? Anybody who'd like to speak for or against this project? Okay, I need a motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11B, public hearing regarding requested rezoning of 2,600 South Ashland Avenue, parcel VA-160-4 from B3 Community Business to I1 Light Industrial. Aaron.
This is for a proposed rezoning of the property, as indicated, from B3 Community Business to I1 Light Industry. The proposal is to convert the building, basically rehab the existing building for use for wholesale businesses. Properties to the south are already zoned to I1 Light Industry. To the north are zoned B3 Community Business. To the east is the railroad and heavy industry. Again, as this is a public hearing, you can receive comment with discussion to take place during the action item.
Is there anybody here who would like to speak for or against this project? Anybody here who'd like to speak for or against this project? One more time, anybody here who'd like to speak for or against this project? Okay.
Hello, this is Rick Fisher online.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I am Rick Fisher, Fisher and Associates Architects. I'm the architect for the project. My address is W 13654 Wilson Lake Road, Memphis, Wisconsin. I think this is a good reuse of this building, of this facility. You know, over the years, it's had a number of different uses, and what we're planning to do with the facility is to replace all the paving, restore the terraces, add green space back into the site, increase some of the parking spaces, approximately doubling the number of spaces. We're going to be refacing the street-facing sides of the building, so I think it's going to be a nice adaptive reuse. We're actually taking down a portion of the building so that it'll be much more consistent as one facility as opposed to the current, you know, multiple additions that it appears now. So I think it's a, you know, a nice reface of the contact surfaces, you know, the paving and all those things that deteriorate over time, as well as all, you know, new faces on the street-facing sides of the building. So I'm in favor of the rezon to rehabilitate this building.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak for or against this project? Okay, I need a motion to close the hearing, please.
So move.
Motion and a second to close the hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11C, public hearing regarding requested rezoning of parcels VA-859 and VA-883 between Cypress Road and West Main Avenue from BP Business Park to R3 Multifamily Residence. Aaron.
Thank you. As indicated, the proposed rezoning, and I'll share my screen here, is for the CDA-owned property between West Main Avenue and Cypress Lane. It is currently zoned BP Business Park. The request is to rezon it to R3 Multifamily Residential. The properties to the west are zoned R3 BP Business Park with a planned unit development overlay. To the south and to the east are all zoned Business Park, and to the north actually is the Town of Lawrence Island with some mini warehouses. Again, as this is a public hearing, you can take comment and we'll have discussion then at the action item.
Okay. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for or against this project? Could you come up to the mic, please, and state your name and address for the record?
Good evening, trustees. My name is Jeremy Anderek, and I live in Greenfield at 4333 South 34th Street. But I'm here on behalf of a landowner on Packerland Drive. Their name is J A B L V B LLC, and they are just to the south of the parcels in question here. Their address is 3,400 Packerland Drive in Ashwabanon 54115. So like I said, I'm here to object to the requested rezoning of parcels VA-859 and VA-883 from BP Business Park to R3 Multifamily Residence on account of the following. When my client's property was developed, none of the adjoining properties were zoned to be high-density multifamily residential apartment dwellings. The commercial tenant at my client's property runs a food testing facility that provides crucial and time-sensitive services for several major employers in the area, talking about meat packers and dairy companies specifically. In order to serve its clients, the facility must be able to conduct its operations 24/7 with people and cars coming and going from the facility at all hours, even sometimes during the middle of the night. The facility is accordingly well-lit at all times for employee safety reasons, and apartment residents will likely have problem with these bright lights. To illustrate, the current apartments at Highland Springs are already unhappy with the bright lights, have complained, and are even farther away from my client's property than the two parcels that you are considering this evening. In addition, when my client purchased and developed its property, it was not anticipating a neighboring set of high-density multifamily dwellings and is concerned about the negative effects that this rezoning will have on its property value. In short, not only does the village's own comprehensive plan indicate multifamily development in this area as undesirable, but my client does not believe that the requested rezoning of parcels VA-859 and VA-883 is compatible with current ongoing use. Respectfully, we request that the board vote nay to leave intact what buffer does still exist between the commercial food testing operations on-site and the existing multifamily residence at Highland Springs. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else who would like to speak for or against this? Sir, could you come up and state your name and address, please?
Good evening. My name is Ryan Van Stratten, 1993 Edgefield Drive. So I don't want to say much about the project. I'm the developer of the project, Alliance Management. But I do just want to point out to this gentleman's comments, our site plan, that side of the building, doesn't have any windows. So we won't have bedroom windows that would be facing over to their parking lot. And I guess I would just point out also that our buildings will likely serve as a barrier and block the windows of some of the neighboring complexes from their lights. So it might not be as bad as what they're expecting, and without windows on that side of the building, I don't really see that being an issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak for or against this project? Excuse me, rezon? Anybody else who'd like to speak for or against this rezon? Okay, I need a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay. The action items. 12A, action regarding ordinance number O3-1-22, rezoning parcel VA-99-5 at 2305 San Louis Place from B3 Community Business to R3 Multifamily Residence. Okay. Aaron, do you have anything to add to this?
Just a couple of things. I'll bring the map up again just for reference to help the discussion. So you heard the public hearing comments, and just for additional background, the Planning Commission, when they reviewed this, did recommend denial of the rezoning request, seven to zero.
Okay. Anybody have any comments? There's none, do we have a motion?
I just have a question on the building. How old is that building, Aaron, that's existing there?
I don't have an exact date. You know, it's vintage 1960 or so, somewhere around there.
Okay. Any other questions, or I'll entertain a motion?
Just a few thoughts, Mary. You know, there is quite a bit of multifamily around the schools there and around that particular area. It seems like that has a higher and better use, at least from my perspective. And it's an interesting location in the community, right off of Cormier, right off of Oneida Street. I think it has a higher and better use. I'm concerned about the size of the units and the densities. And so with that, I would make a motion to deny as presented.
So that would be to uphold what, Plan Commission?
Correct.
That they recommended denial?
Correct.
And I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the denial of the rezon. Any more comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 12B, action regarding ordinance number O3-3-2022, rezoning 2,600 South Ashland Avenue, parcel VA-160-4 from B3 Community Business to I1 Light Industry. Aaron.
Okay, again, I'll share my screen just to facilitate the discussion. I had a little technical difficulty earlier. Jeremy helped me out with that, appreciate it. As indicated in the map, the proposed rezoning is from B3 to I1 Light Industry. You can see the surrounding zoning. The property to the south and to the west was recently rezoned, probably what, a year ago or so, for the Broadway Collision Center from B3 to I1 as well. Plan Commission did review this, and they did recommend approval of the rezoning on a seven to zero vote.
Okay. Any comments?
I know when we reviewed this at the Planning Commission, we thought this was a good use, and it's great to see that this piece of property is going to be upgraded. So I would make the motion to approve this rezoning.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning. I do have one question, Aaron. So in the green sheet here, it says, "A review of the proposed site plan and exterior renovations will be performed by the Ashwaban Site Plan Review."
That actually was completed, and Site Plan did recommend approval of it with a few conditions.
Okay. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 12C, action regarding ordinance number O3-2-2022, rezoning parcels VA-859 and VA-883 between Cypress Road and West Main Avenue from BP Business Park to R3 Multifamily Residence. Aaron.
Okay, once again, I'll just share my screen here with the map. There we go. Okay, there we go. Working through a few things. So as you can see, the two parcels right here are proposed to be rezoned from BP Business Park to R3 Multifamily Residential. Here's the existing R3. This is Business Park with a PUD overlay that permits multifamily, and the surrounding properties are zoned BP. And here is the Town of Lawrence Island with the mini warehouses. At Plan Commission, it was recommended for approval on a four to three vote.
Aaron, can you point out on there exactly where the 3,400 Packerland Drive is, where the food processing place is?
Yes, that is Food Safety Net Services. That's in this building right here.
Okay, so right in the corner, then?
Correct.
The Skyline Development Building?
Yeah, is that what it is? Okay.
I would also like to point out that the pictures that are in the packet are not, does not go according to our design guidelines, so that will not look like that picture. Anybody else have any discussion, comments?
Well, being on the Plan Board, we did discuss this quite extensively. We had no problem on rezoning it. I'm not one for spot zoning, as I've always said. This is not a spot zone deal. All we're doing is moving it over to this particular one, to the R3, which the surrounding area is R3. So if there's no other questions, I am going to move to approve the rezoning for R3 as presented.
Can I just ask one question of the developer, Mr. Van Stratten?
I need a second.
No, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, Tracy.
You had said that you don't plan any windows for your facility towards the food processing plant, is that correct?
Right, so we've got a building design, a building that we built in Howard that we really like, that has some good floor plans and a good setup. And the building is structured in a way that it's a, you know, a long building with units facing the front and the back. The two sides of the building don't have windows. So the way that the site plan would be laid out, there'd be a drive lane along the entire site going from the front to the back. That would be between the buildings and the food safety building, and the sides of the building would face towards that drive lane. So across the entire site plan, there won't be any windows, unless you want a few decorative windows, that are going to be facing towards the food safety. They'll all be facing to the south and the north, towards each other and towards West Main Avenue and Cypress.
And Cypress, okay. So the window portion of it will be north and south versus they won't be facing out to the east then, is what you're saying?
Exactly. Right, and they won't face out to the west either, so they won't face, our windows won't face towards the other apartment complexes either.
We, I live near some industrial area, and we've had some concerns in our neighborhood with noise from the industrial area into the neighborhood, so I am concerned about, you know, problems with putting this in, and then all of a sudden the neighbors are not happy because of the noise that's coming from that development. So I'm glad to hear that you are putting some provisions in there, and I guess I would agree that it probably would block that other development a bit and maybe keep the noise a little bit away from them. But, you know, it's always a concern you're going to have when you're putting residential up against manufacturing-type facility, and you just have to be very aware of that and try not to, you know, build it, so we're going to have concerns in the future.
Yes, we're definitely taking that into account in the way that we're designing the site.
Thank you.
Aaron, correct me if I'm wrong, this has got to come in front of the Site Plan Committee. Am I right?
That's correct. This is strictly for the rezoning tonight.
And if it's just for rezoning, all those issues will be taken care of at the Site Plan Committee when that does be presented at that time, so we will definitely look at the lighting situation if that's an issue at this point, which is not what we're talking about. We're talking about rezoning it.
Right. So as I said at Plan Commission many years ago, when the industrial park was designed, this was Zone BP, which is Business Park, but I think the market has changed for some of those types of buildings. And so I will, I will vote in favor of this because I, I think that it'll be a nice development for that area, and there is R3 zoning out there.
You know, the village has owned that property for 150 years, and nothing has happened to it. So with the conditions that are out there, I think rezoning is... So with the conditions that are out there, I think rezoning is definitely a way to go to fill this property.
Okay.
Well, I'd just like to make a few comments. In essence, I don't think it was approved with no problem at the Plan Commission. We did have a discussion and it was a four to three vote. So that's not a unanimous state, you know, statement on this. I've always been a proponent of affordable housing and the diversity and the right percentage of mix. I think if we had a map showing the amount of multifamily in the village of Ashwabnan, we as a board would be surprised at how many locations we have multifamily. So with that, I think diversity is a fine thing, but I think we're tipping the mix. And, and with that, you know, we're dealing with housing issues, we're dealing with affordable housing and that type of thing. And it's a tough environment that we're in right now. And I know there's other properties for sale out there. Ameriprise has some signs out there. Green Bay Tennis has some signs out there. I'm not sure what the United Nation will be doing with some of the properties on Packerland, but I'm not so sure that this is a special circumstance relative to our comprehensive plan that makes this a slam dunk. I am concerned about it. I'm not sure, at one point in time, I know with Ameriprise, they had, we were supposed to contact them and talk to them about any rezonings in this particular area relative to Business Park. And I just want to emphasize, this is not industrial park, this is business park. And, and with that, I'm not sure if Ameriprise was contacted on it or not. But that being said, I have concerns about it. I think it's, you know, we've got Murphy out there, we've got Marlo out there, we've got Tunin out there, we've got Garrett out there. And I just think we have a little bit too much multifamily in that particular area and at some point in time in the future. You know, it's, it's nice to get development. It's nice to get the tax value. But I think there's a higher and better use at that location. And if this is approved, I surely hope that the standards and the quality that have been portrayed are followed at the Site Plan Committee level. Those are just my thoughts, no more, no less.
Okay. Any other comments?
Steve, I understand your concerns. And I have to kind of, oh, fucking mic here. I understand your concerns, Stephen. I kind of, I kind of go along with you. You were on the ground floor running with that some years ago. I don't want to elaborate on it, but traveling around like I've done in the last month or so, I can't believe the amount of buildings that are being built in the United States and they're all either apartment homes or new construction with residential. And the residentials that they're building are basically becoming communities like the villages per se that some of you may recognize. The building is just out of sight. I don't know where they're finding the people to build like they are. And I, I think our community is the same way. We've got a lot of apartments here. I shook my head looking across the street, but they've done very well in occupancy, either across the street or on the river here, which are newer ones. So I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I still think, knowing that property's been empty that long, I think this would be a direction to go is to rezone it for residential area.
I guess my comments are, is I would, I would really, you know, Aaron, I know you don't need any more projects, but I think some of the points that are being brought up are probably valid, that it would probably be helpful for us as the village board to understand how much percentage of usage is being done with multifamily, how much is single family, how much is, I know you have some of that data already, but it probably needs to be updated. It is probably something that would be very valuable to help us in being able to make these decisions. I too agree with Gary because as you guys know, I was traveling almost the same path he was. And it is pretty amazing how many multifamily structures are going up right now. I don't know if it's because of the inability of people to make down payments in that single family homes that is driving that, but it definitely is. So I, I can see this need here and I guess I'm going to vote in favor of it just because this land has been sitting so long and we start getting something back for it. But I would like to see that, that information somehow fed back to us to kind of help us because I think Steve's making a very valid point, especially with everything that we've done in the Title Town District and around the village right now, to be able to get some of that information would be very, very helpful to help us make decisions, especially in the planning board level.
I can certainly pull that information together based upon the zoning and assessment information. Every year, under state statute, I do have to put together a housing report and a housing affordability report. So that information is readily available, but I certainly can pull this down to multifamily, single family, two families, so on, and give that information out to the board.
Right. You know, one other quick comment I want to make about blabbering on about housing out through the United States. Affordable housing is a problem throughout the whole country. I read quite a bit when I'm out in other areas to see what kind of problems they've got. Affordable housing is a problem and we're not coming up with decent solutions for the medium income people that are looking for homes.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning on West Main and to, from BP to R3 multifamily. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
Motion carried. 12D, proclamation about the Ashwabnan sesquicentennial. So here we go. "In honor of the Ashwabnan sesquicentennial, March 19, 2022. Whereas the community known as Ashwabnan is part of a millennia-long history of people living in this region, including native indigenous peoples. And whereas the town of Ashwabnan was erected by act of the legislature of the state of Wisconsin, approved March 16th and published the 19th of the same month, 1872, being chapter four of the local laws of 1872. And whereas today, Ashwabnan is a vibrant, diverse community of approximately 17,000 residents and serves as a regional hub for shopping, work, and play, growing to over 35,000 people daily. And whereas the government of the town and village of Ashwabnan and its many employees played an important role in forming and defining the physical and cultural characteristics of the community. And whereas the village of Ashwabnan prepares to celebrate the community's sesquicentennial in 2022, where we will reflect on our history, celebrate our accomplishments, and plan for a prosperous future. And whereas throughout 2022, the community, community will be hosting various events and activities to honor and celebrate our rich history, culminating with the sesquicentennial celebration week of August 8 through the 14, 2022. Now therefore I, Mary Kardowski, President and the Village of Ashwabnan, on behalf of the entire village board, do hereby recognize March 19, 2022 as Ashwabnan Sesquicentennial Day." There you go. Thank you. That's a lot of whereas's.
Whoa, what is it?
Okay, let the, let the fun begin. Okay. 12E, action on reserve Class B beer/Class B liquor license request for Highland Ridge Golf Operations LLC, DBA Highland Ridge Golf Course. Chris?
Highland Ridge Golf Club Corporation doing business as Highland Ridge Golf Club surrendered their reserve Class B beer/Class B liquor license back to the village on February 17, 2022. And Highland Ridge Golf Operations LLC doing business as Highland Ridge Golf Course at 3640 Sand Acres Drive, owned by Stephen Suzanne Rosek, applied for a reserve Class B beer/Class B liquor license. All paperwork and corresponding fee has been filed accordingly and Protection, Public Works and Protection Committee approved unanimously. And Mr. Rosek is here if you have any questions.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Like, Chris said, the Public Works presented this and had no problem with it. All we're doing is taking it from one person to transferring it to somebody else. So I'll move to approve this presentation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Class B beer/Class B liquor license for Highland Ridge Golf Operations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 12F, review and action regarding escrow agreement between the Village of Ashwabnan and TDS MetroCom LLC. Doug Martin?
I see a lot of the audience stayed tonight to hear my presentation on the escrow agreement. I really appreciate it.
Knocked them out again there, Doug.
Had to wait, Doug. Good job.
Yep. They saw that one coming and they said, "We're getting out of here."
It's just a Public Works thing. What can you say?
Yes, yes. If it isn't Stormwater Utility last month, it was the escrow agreement this one.
[Laughter]
Yes.
Yeah.
In my best Ben Stein voice, I'll get started.
You're not, you're not going to make it as long as Steve did though, are you?
Well, Gary, here we go. The past four or five months, we've discussed this a few times. Now, TDS is coming to the Green Bay area, to all the communities. They're putting in an underground fiber optic network to provide high-speed internet cable, high-speed internet and TV service to, to their customers. And what we've been working on the past three or four months have been twofold or two items. One, an update or reclassification, if you will, of our, our right-of-way permit, putting in writing a lot of the terminology and requirements that the village has for its right-of-way for use by the permit holders or in their design work. And the second item, especially in this case, TDS is coming and they're doing basically a blanket sweep through the village. They're, they're constructing this fiber optic network throughout the village. First time we've seen something like this. Just the sheer quantity of work is going to require assistance, much like a road reconstruction project. We're going to need assistance overseeing this work, both in permitting and the construction inspection. So we've been working the past couple of months with a consultant who will be assisting us with this, not only permit review, but construction administration and developing from previous projects they've done of this nature, an estimate for an escrow agreement that TDS would put money into an escrow account for payment of not only the consulting services, but the permitting fees. And we also have some contingency in there as well. By contingency, I mean currently they're planning on having two to three crews in the village for the next two years. If all of a sudden they come along and they need additional crews, they require more work, more locating, things of that nature, that would be above and beyond what our current services can provide and there would be some additional cost to that. TDS has agreed to the format. We've had both Village Legal and, and TDS Legal reviewing this agreement the past couple of months, getting it in place. And it's before you tonight for review and signature.
Well, this is going to be a hoot and holler, isn't it? You need a motion to approve?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the escrow agreement between the Village of Ashwabnan and TDS MetroCom. Any more discussion?
One quick question, Doug. Doug, this is all paperwork that has to be done before construction starts?
Yes, we, we've been in the process of reviewing the first couple of permits, but nothing was going to be issued until this, this was signed.
Okay. And then they're going to go to work or there's more paperwork involved?
We haven't, we haven't issued the permits yet. They've, they have 26 in total. They'll be submitting over two years. They submitted the first two about a month ago. The, the review of the first two permits is nearly done. Once that's permitted, then there's going to be a pre-construction meeting. Then TDS is going to be putting out door hangers in the neighborhoods where they're going to be working in the next couple of months.
Okay.
So that people know who's doing the work and who to contact.
People will be notified then when they're in the whatever area.
And, and for the folks listening at, at home or watching at home, on our website, there is going to be an area where you can go and we're going to have the permit drawings that are showing where they're going to be. And we'll go permit by permit and it'll show the neighborhood in which they'll be working so that you can go on there and at least see, you know, if you see some flag showing up in your yard or you see somebody with a TDS hat walking around, you know what, what's going on and why.
Okay. Is anything going to be printed in the press, the, the paper that we are associated with in the village?
I don't know if, I don't know if TDS has put something into the press or not.
Okay.
I know they were looking, they, they did put something in the village brochure, spring brochure.
Right.
I don't know if they took anything out in the Ashwabnan Press or the Times Press.
It's funny how many people get that paper and that, you know, they come up with questions to you and they would, you know, you got to answer them somehow. I'll direct them to you though.
If you want to direct them to Steve Burr, that'd be fine too.
Oh, that would be a good one.
Gary, I know that TDS has produced some type of advertisements in the Press Times recently, the inserts and other advertisements. It's more or less geared towards soliciting for services, not necessarily geared towards construction. But I know our, our local press has published some articles and reports about this type of work in the area. And I see Kevin is online, one of the reporters for the Press Times, and I'm sure he's had interest in this story and maybe he'll, he'll put an article in the paper about how this is impacting some of the local communities. There's my plug to Kevin that's listening online.
I just have a quick question. I had reached out to Doug about the escrow amount and he explained to, I was wondering if it was just strictly for the consulting fees for Rooker and Milky coming in and covering all their costs. And I'm just wondering, and maybe you answered this and I didn't catch it, Doug, if it covers any staff costs. I know you said if it's anything above and beyond, so you're planning on so much and if we get, if they have more crews and we have more work, like the utility locates that our staff is doing all that stuff. So can you just address that a little more clearly for me so I understand exactly what's in that escrow?
Sure. In the escrow agreement, there is the cost for Rooker and Milky to do the inspection permitting cost. There's also the permit review. Once that permit is reviewed, the village issues the permit. So there is a nominal fee that we charge also for doing that, which will be covered.
Okay.
There's a contingency factor and there also that, like I said before, they're, they're anticipating two to three crews. Anybody that does work in a community and calls Digger Hot, Digger's Hotline, we have to respond to. We can't charge just because they call it Digger's Hotline. If all of a sudden they go above and beyond and they bring, instead of two or three crews, they bring 12 crews in, that's above and beyond. And then we have to pull back the reins and say, "Okay, this is, this is above and beyond what normal services can provide." We're going to have to dip into that contingency to move forward.
Okay. So is there, there's no cost for like Steve's time or your time or anything that would be in there? It was really the consultant and then the permit costs is what's in the, in the escrow? Is that correct? And then contingency?
The permit cost is, we, is our time.
Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you.
So Doug, are we talking, this is just going to be bi-directional drilling again or is this going to actually be digging to plant these?
Most of it'll be bored. Most of it'll be directional drilling, except where they put the handholds in.
Yeah, actually.
You know, they'll be, you'll see the fiber optic, the duct come up.
Right.
In numerous areas along their route and then they put in the little underground vaults.
Okay.
Okay. Any more questions, discussions? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the escrow agreement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 12G, review and possible action on Smith Playground bid award. Rex?
Okay. In your packets, as well as in the back of the room, on the tripods and on the table, you have different designs that were submitted for the Smith Park Playground equipment. Just trying to lay the groundwork real quick. For our, for the village's ADA accessibility plan as it relates to park and recreation facilities, we divide the village into four quadrants. There should be one accessible park in every quadrant. So this, the designs are all accessible designs. There's rubberized. There's rubberized surfacing involved in all of them. There's ramps involved in them and other different play panels and features involved in all of them to meet those ADA requirements for what we offer to our citizens and to the surrounding community. We have, there's a bids for playground equipment because I know we've got a few new people here. The bids for playground equipment are a little bit different than your normal bid. Typically how we do that is we take what the dollar amount is. We, it was $95,000 budgeted. I pulled $5,000 out for concrete materials as well as wood chips when the project is done. So that leaves us $90,000 for the project. So $90,000 was the dollar amount that was sent to all of the playground companies and said, give us as much as you can, your best design for $90,000. So that way you can take a look and you can see how many features the playground equipment has. It allows each of them to put in some of their own unique types of equipment that, that each company offers, and that's what you see in the back. This went to Park Board last week. Came out, there were, there were two top companies that submitted designs. It was Minnesota, Wisconsin Playgrounds and Northland Recreation. Unanimous decision by Park Board to recommend a Northland Recreations design to move forward to the village board. At this point, I, I know not only is it an ADA structure, but there's also a play element involved for the five to 12-year-old age group. So it's kind of a combined type of a thing. And I think the Park Board felt that the Northland design best covered both, both groups. So I will take any questions you have about the recommendation or, or any of the designs.
We discussed the project pretty extensively at Park Committee and everyone was in favor of the Little Tikes. It's a good quality equipment and like Rex said, it, it has good ADA components as well as it, it'll serve the five to 12-year-olds, which Rex was saying is some of the bigger users out there. So I think it'll be a great piece of equipment for that area.
So that's the recommendation of Park?
Recommendation of Park Board.
With that noting that Park and Rex spent considerable amount of time on it, I'd make a motion to approve Northlandic as presented.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the purchase of the Little Tike designed by Northland Recreation for Smith Park. Any questions, concerns, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Number 13, items for next agenda. Yes, Joel?
I think we
Sorry, Gary, go ahead.
We, we should get something so that Patrick would have a part in this conversations that we have up here. We haven't had any rough questions tonight to use his talents yet, but.
Go, go easy, Gary.
I would say it might be coming very quick.
Yeah, his day will come, don't you?
It's his first board meeting now here, Gary.
The only thing is that I know we're going to be taking down a lot of the ash trees and that has gotten to be, this year is, well, last year was very, very noticeable and it's getting worse in a lot of different areas and, you know, a lot of it's right-of-ways. A lot of it's private property. A lot of it's in the conservancies. Maybe an update from, from Tim would be appropriate as it relates to the work efforts coming up. Have you been communicating with the people on some of the streets, Rex? You know, to let them know that this is, this is going to be
Besides the blue dots.
Yeah, yeah.
Blue dots, pink dots, there's different colored dots all over the village.
The yellow dots.
Yeah, we, we try and do extensive advertising on it, whether it be in our brochure, whether it be on our Facebook pages, different types of social media, print media. But we can, we can certainly talk more and, and I can have Tim come at the, to the next village board meeting, if that's okay, and, and give a more thorough report directly to, to everyone. We've done, Trios was the company that did the initial tree takedown. Most of that work was done from, if you divide the village into two, as Highway 41 does, it was done to the east of Highway 41. And next year, Trios, I believe, has agreed verbally to hold their pricing, which would allow us to, to extend their contract into 2022 for the west side of Highway 41. So, and then, then we've also had them do some tree takedowns in some of our park facilities as well as the right-of-ways. Still more to be done.
Yeah, there's some areas in, in my district there that are, are just, the entire streets are going to be devastated.
Yep, there are. The whole street was planted in ash.
Yeah.
And it's just a beautiful canopy and it's going to look totally different.
In the fall, it was, it was just spectacular at points in time with either the yellows or the purples and you take your breath away and right now it takes your breath away in a different way.
A real quick note, note for, for the village board members as you may get phone calls. So things are going to be done in waves. The tree takedowns are all done in waves. Okay, and then the stumps are still there or, or they're starting to take the stumps out. But then once the trees are all done, once they're all done, then they switch crews and the next crew comes in and then they'll be grinding out the stumps. And then when all the stumps are ground out, then the next crew comes in and they'll do the ground reparations where they'll level things out, put new dirt down, take away the wood chips, so on and so forth. So they're not going to do it block by block or piecemeal. It's most efficient to do all at once in waves. So once a tree's down, it still may take a couple of months for them to be coming back and grind out those stumps and then take care of the ground. I know that's one of the calls that we get quite often in our office on, on, how come the stump is still here? Well, we're still taking down the trees and then all the stumps will be taken out at once when that crew rolls in.
Very good, thank you. Very good information.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is in the brochure too. They have a nice section kind of explaining. So that one I'll tell the residents, so that'll help too.
Okay, Joel?
More of an announcement on items for next agenda, I just wanted to point out that we have a, a new face behind the camera, if you will, tonight. Haley Youngren, our new multimedia communication specialist is in the back room here, working with Jeremy, learning the 1957 Technicolor TV system that we have. So as we wrap up and go into closed session, if you happen to see Haley come out, feel free to say hi to Haley. We're really excited to have her on board as well.
We just got to make sure we got Gary's best side and that's, we got to emphasize that.
Well, that's why he's on that side of the, of the dais, right?
What would that be? I would please you.
I'm not touching that one.
All right, everybody turn their mics off.
Okay, here we go. Number 14, closed session items. During the meeting, the village board of the Village of Ashwabnon may convene into closed session pursuant to A, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, parent one, parent E, to consider, discuss, act on deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business regarding tax parcel VA-66-7-F, 830 Morris Avenue, the TIP Developers' Performance Agreement with GenCap Dana Ashwabnon 75 LLC for tax parcel VA-56-4-1, and the collective bargaining negotiations with Ashwabnon Public Safety Association where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. B, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, parent one, parent G, to consider, discuss, act regarding the TIP Developers' Performance Agreement with GenCap Dana Ashwabnon 75 LLC for tax parcel VA-56-4-1, and conferring with legal counsel concerning strategy to be adopted by the board with respect to litigation in which it is likely to become involved. The village board may thereafter reconvene into open session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, parent two, to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda. I need a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Motion in a second to go into closed session. Roll call, please. President Kardowski? Yes. Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Kubaki?
Aye.
Trustee Service?
Yes.
Trustee Krieger?
Yes.
Trustee Flukie?
Yes.
Okay, we're in closed session. Thank you, everybody.